Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on July 8th, 2024, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first call is the Call to Order. Our second is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is public comments. Do we have any, Monica? All right. Item four is the superintendent's recognitions. I know Colonel Lakeisha Stokes. Colonel Stokes was supposed to be here this evening, but unavoidably couldn't be here. But she's going to reschedule and come for a different time. Item five is executive hires and Dr. Ward. The first one is introduction of the Fine Arts Coordinator.
I'm going to show the song in my head with Alex Trebek. Yeah, that one, yeah. Okay, well, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to introduce you to some new employees and then recommend one. So the first person I'd like to introduce is our new Fine Arts Coordinator, and I'm probably going to mess up your last name. Where are you, Ms. Boquin?
Boquin, you're right.
Oh, yay. Okay, come on up. So Ms. Boquin has been a music educator for 21 years in Wichita Falls, where she's taught elementary music, art, orchestra, and most recently, she's completing her tenure there as the...
Hershey?
Hershey Band Director. Band Director, okay. She received a bachelor's and master's degree from Midwestern State University and has served in multiple leadership positions within Wichita Falls and TMEA. She and her husband Beau, is he here tonight?
He is not.
Okay. She and her husband Beau are incredibly excited to be joining the Temple community and starting this journey and supporting our Temple Fine Arts program. So I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Boquin. Thank you. You don't have to say anything, but you can if you want.
I'm good.
Okay. Ms. Boquin, if you...
I'm going to shake your hand.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry. And next we have Dr. Rogers, if you want to come on over. And so Dr. Rogers was actually approved last, at our last board meeting, for the Chief Academics Officer. She is moving from the Executive Director of Secondary Education position. And she's coming, well, she came from Colleen, where she was a Spanish teacher. And then she came here to be an AP at the high school and then Associate Principal and just continues to shine in Temple ISD. So we've already approved her position, but I'm going to let her say a few things to the board. Thank you. You're welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Adams, Mr. Posey, and members of the board. The Passion Translation of Psalms 75, 6 and 7 reads as follows. This I know, the favor that brings promotion doesn't come from anywhere on earth; for no one exalts a person but God. He alone determines where favor rests. He anoints one for greatness and brings another down to his knees. I would first like to give honor to God for blessing me with His favor and developing in me the gifts that allow me to stand before you today. To say that I am honored is entirely an understatement. I would like to express my gratitude for the trust that you have placed in me and assure you that I will work diligently to honor that trust. I thought that we were enough away from the real thing that I would not cry, so I'm sorry. I would like to express my gratitude to my family. I am certain that I do not say thank you enough, but I would not be here today without your love, support, and sacrifices. To Dr. Adams, thank you for your wisdom and mentorship, and to my leadership colleagues, thank you for allowing me to learn from you. I am a better leader because of our work together. As Dr. Ward stated, for the past 10 years, I have had the privilege of learning and growing as a leader in Temple ISD. It has also been a blessing to be able to entrust the education of my children to the incredible teachers and leaders of this district. There is no place that we would rather be than Temple ISD. In my interview for this position, I shared my plan for leading the academics department, and I would like to share it briefly with you as well. When I considered the work ahead, I pictured a set of gears turning in unison to move the district forward academically. If just one gear is not functioning at its highest potential, it hinders the ability of all other gears to turn effectively and affects the entire system's performance. In my Gear Up for Results Plan, I identified four gears that I believe are necessary to continue to move teaching and learning forward in Temple ISD: enhance support, respond to data, inspect instruction, and expect leadership. In my new role, it is my intention to enhance the support provided by our academics department, including bilingual, special education, and digital learning, so that we serve campuses even more effectively than we do right now. It is also my intention to respond to data, including the STAR data that we recently received and the data collected throughout the school year to ensure that the learning needs of all students are met. I will work together with campus and district leaders to inspect instruction so that students are engaged in high-quality learning experiences, regardless of which Temple ISD school they attend and regardless of which teacher's classroom they enter. My final focus will be to expect leadership at the campus and district levels so that hard work of our teachers and leaders results in a visible impact and the recognition that they so truly deserve. I have never known a greater group of leaders than what we currently have in Temple ISD. I consider it a privilege to work among them, and I'm confident that together we can achieve the vision that you have set for this district. Once again, I thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to celebrating the district's academic growth and progress throughout the years to come. Thank you.
Dr. Rogers, would you like to introduce your family members?
Yes, I'm so sorry. Yes. So I have my parents, Thomas and Ciola Rogers here. My oldest son, Johnny Rogers. And then I have my children, Kariel, Amaris, and Alvin, and their father, Alvin, as well. Thank you for coming.
All right. Item C, consideration for approval, Executive Director of Secondary Education. Dr. Rogers.
The interview committee for the position of Executive Director of Secondary Education consists consisting of Dr. Sarah Watson, Adrian Lopez, Connie Cisneros, Ashley Jones, Jema Ferguson, Dr. Casey Blomquist, Miss D. Anderson, and Dr. Renata Rogers interviewed six candidates for the position of Executive Director of Secondary Education and selected Mrs. Amy Armstrong as the lone finalist for the position. Ms. Armstrong graduated from the University of Nebraska in 1993 with a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education with a focus on mathematics. In 2003, she graduated from Texas State University with a Master of Education in Middle School Mathematics, and she graduated in 2014 with an EDS in Educational Leadership and Administration from Walden University. Ms. Armstrong currently serves as the Director of Accountability and School Improvement for Temple ISD and is a staff developer for Avid. Prior to that, she served as Director of Instructional Design as well as Assistant Principal and Principal in Belton ISD and a Teacher in Campus and District Instructional Specialist in Colleen ISD. Ms. Armstrong has been married to her husband Christopher for 19 years. They have three children, Brady, Bailey, and Brentley. Ms. Armstrong is excited to assume the role of Executive Director of Secondary Education. It is with great pleasure that the interview committee recommend Ms. Amy Armstrong for approval for the position of Executive Director of Secondary Education.
Members, any questions? This does require approval.
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Allen. All in favor signify by saying aye. A light sign opposed, the ayes have it. Congratulations.
So, Mr. Posey, Dr. Adams, and the board, I just want to say that I was here a year ago, and you approved me for a different position. And I absolutely loved my last year, and it gave me a huge opportunity to get to know the people in Temple and build some relationships that I feel like will help me transition into this position. It was a tough decision because I really love my job, where I'm at, but I realized that more, it wasn't so much about the job as it was about the team. And I love who I work with. And I feel like my experience that I have gained throughout the years really helps me move into this position to be the best that I can be. And obviously, I have some very big shoes to fill. It's very difficult to follow Dr. Rogers because she's pretty amazing, but I'm excited that she'll be here and I'll still get to pick her brain and she can work as a mentor for me. And so I just want to say thank you very much for approving me. Dr. Adams, Dr. Rogers, thank you for hiring me. It's been an incredible journey with Temple, and I look forward to many more years. Thank you.
Do you have anybody you want to recognize? Is there anybody here tonight you want to recognize?
Oh, yeah, I should recognize my people. My husband works, so he's on the road today, and so he couldn't be here. But my oldest son, Brady Reynolds, and his wife, Catherine Reynolds, they came to support me, so very glad to have them.
Item six is the Board President's Report. A is the demographic study.
Always a shock when everybody leaves for the demographic presentation. It happens all the time, so. Good evening, Board President Posey, members of the board. Dr. Adams, thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you tonight and be able to go over this information with you. So with that said, I'll start taking us through it. It has been an interesting time related to kind of what's been happening with the housing market and how that has played out in general related to demographics. We have seen a drop compared to where we were in that 2021 year when you look at the overall housing picture, and not just specifically within our region, but also just throughout the state. It's really tied into the market conditions, really seeing what was happening with the existing housing market, where the historic low interest rates were in that 2021 timeframe, and how that really changed over a very short period of time when we got into 2022 and the Federal Reserve started raising the interest rates, and we saw that really a fairly significant drop related to an increase in the overall interest rates and really a drop in the overall number of sales that correlated with that. You also see tied into that kind of what's happened with house pricing. So you can see really over the last 10 years that significant increase that's taken place not only when you take into consideration existing homes, but also new homes. So a significant increase related to an increase for those new homes of about 102,000. When you look at your 2014 all the way through 2024, again, about a 58% increase in that timeframe. And then the, when you look at the existing home market, again, also a fairly significant increase of about 105,000. So, and we're seeing even in this year, a fairly significant uptick, partly tied into the fact that you have fewer homes that have been on the market, at least in this past year, because we've had a lot of folks that have been locked in at that lower interest rate. And so you don't have as much housing activity related to the existing housing market. But what that has meant is for new home builders, that creates a market because we know we still have a lot of folks moving into the area. And so you still have a housing need that's out there. And so we've got folks that are using that as an opportunity to start building, building quite a few new developments. And we'll kind of take you through some of those as we go through the presentation. So overall, you'll see that we've got about 17 active building subdivisions throughout the district, about 15 futures, and so I'll kind of highlight those. You'll also see on the map, those that are outlined in red, those are subdivisions that have activity, groundwork, utilities, those type of things that are happening in preparation for additional lots that we will have within the overall district. And when we go through this, we'll kind of break it down into sections. We'll take you through kind of the northeast section of the district, northwest, and then we'll finish up with the south area kind of close to the new elementary school campus. We'll also look at the multifamily. So you'll take a look at where we're at related to the overall multifamily picture. You'll see that we've got about 7,000, about 7,300 total housing units, multifamily units that are throughout the district. Out of that, there's about 1,400 students. And so we have an overall yield of about .2. So for every five multifamily units that are out there, we have a student. And so that gives you an idea of what that looks like. We also see that we've got about 1,570 additional future multifamily plans that are out there, out into the near future. And again, 130 are age restricted, so would not necessarily be an impact whenever we start looking at numbers related to enrollment in the future. In addition to that, you'll also see kind of in the map where that, where those developments are specifically on the map and how significant the yield is in those various different developments in each one of those elementary attendance zones. So this is tied into that northeast quadrant, kind of in the central area, in the Jefferson Elementary Attendance Zone. This is Bel Air North. It has 271 total future lots in that development. It spans about a little over 60 acres. We would anticipate that based off of that, and you'll see this in most of the developments. We talked to the administration. They wanted us to put together the general estimate of what we would anticipate with yield in each one of those areas based off of the numbers. So we've got an average yield of anywhere from .45 to .65. So that gives you an idea for every 10 homes, how many students would potentially come out of those 10 homes. So anywhere from about four to six students out of every 10 homes that would be built is where we would anticipate that. As we get through several of these, we'll reference some of the existing developments. And so they'll, we'll still reference the total, but if there's already development, already homes in that, that number would come out of that overall number.
Well, just one thing for board members. I'm sure everybody else knows this, but you know, when it says the name of the elementary school, it's not the location, it's the district it's in.
So we have kind of in that Garcia Attendance Zone area is the County View Edition. Again, 222 total lots there. Have five homes currently under construction right now. Again, referencing about 47 of those homes. So when we look at about 47 of those homes, our yield out of that is .383. Again, referencing a little bit of an uptick related to where we would anticipate the long-term yield being in that .45 to .49 range. So ultimately, in this area related to the total number of students, we would have somewhere between 100 and to 109 total students in that K through 12 grade area. Also, we've gotten that same region, your northeast mixed-use development. Again, a future that's out there that will have to be taken into account in future years. And then just to the south of that is a development called French Hill. And so that has about 258 total lots within it. Again, it's over about 48 acres. And again, that reference, we could anticipate somewhere between 116 to 166 students ultimately when those developments are built out. Again, this is, these are developments that have been platted over the last year, year and a half. A few of them have really just, we had groundwork underway just this, in January of this year, specifically to that northeast quadrant, northeast mixed-use area. We also have Oak Ridge that's in that Garcia area. It's a development that's been in place for a while, 133 occupied houses there, .556, so a little bit larger yield there in that overall development. Going to the northwest area, you can see this is in that Kennedy Powell region. This is Monteverde. 95 total lots as 25 future lots there, 36 vacant developed lots. And again, price point of about 175 to 260,000 is the price point for those homes in that area. Again, fairly small community, not going to have a tremendous amount of students because of the small number of lots, but again, could be somewhere in that 57 to 62 range related to the overall number of students that build out. Future development that's just outside the loop there, referenced currently right now is the corporate campus. Could potentially be as many as 4,000 total lots in that overall development. So not anticipating anything taking place over the next few years, but definitely something that we would want to make sure we keep track of and knowledge of when the timeframes would be. Right now, we're anticipating that's going to be somewhere in that 2027 timeframe for development in the first several lots that may be delivered in that overall development. And again, when taking into consideration those numbers, there could potentially be several thousand students that would be a part of that overall development. Pepper Creek Crossing. This is in that Western Hills Attendance Zone area. 292 total future lots that are there. Again, had the preliminary plat that was approved back in the spring of 2023. Again, still anticipating that we could have somewhere between 130 or 100 to 190 total students that would ultimately come out of this development when it gets underway. Kind of going to the south, so covered those northeast and northwest areas. Getting into the south where we've got quite a bit of development kind of around the new elementary area. Talking about Water Crossing, has 75 total lots. Again, has about 35 permits that have been issued and construction taking place in that area on those number of homes. Again, we still about see about 30 additional vacant developed lots left to be built out within that small development. There's Patriot Crossing that has 94 future lots that are out there. This is over about 20 acres total. Again, this was platted just this past spring, so it's a fairly new development. But again, kind of in that new elementary zone and would anticipate activity taking place in this area, in this development, starting in the next year or two. You can also see kind of by the Meredith Dunbar Campus, Crestview Farms. It has 477 total future lots that are there, part of an overall master plan that's going to involve some commercial. It'll have some duplexes. So it's going to have a number of different pieces that are going to be a part of that overall development. And then just to the, just to the west of that is going to be East Heights Development. That's going to be about 42 total future lots, small development in that area currently right now, and anticipating actual groundwork taking place and starting this fall. So starting to move forward again. Anticipate several of those developments that are around the new elementary school campus will start to have some activity and some lots being delivered here shortly. And then we've also got the Ridge at Knob Creek. This has a total of about 323 future lots that are out there. They are kind of going through final plats, and that is just taking place in the last few months. So again, this is, groundwork has started taking place on that development, so we do anticipate those lots being delivered and new homes starting in the next year, year and a half. And then we have Pecan Creek South. Again, about 523 total lots within that. Fairly established development there, has about 282 homes that are currently occupied right there. When we start talking about that yield and referencing what the typical yield has been, when we think about those future numbers, you can see that our current student yield out of that 282-home development right now is about .434. So right in line with where we anticipate most of those traditional yields are. And then we also have South Point that has 329 future lots, 57 future lots. They do have 10 homes that are currently under construction currently right now. They do have 191 of those that are occupied. Some of those, I don't know if we got the full number currently right now. It's got a fairly low yield, but we would anticipate at those price points, and we just anticipate that that yield will increase over the next year or two to get that closer to that traditional yield. We're getting there, I promise. But it's, again, it's quite a few developments that are out there. Again, you'll see that we've got Hillside Village that has 265 total lots. 210 of those are still vacant developed lots that are available to be built on. 44 homes that are currently occupied currently right now. And I would say again, that price point is somewhere in that 270 to 370 range. Just to the north of our Sampson Howard Elementary School campus, you have 377 total lots that are in that Prairie Ridge development. Again, a number of homes are already built in that development currently right now with 229 of those homes that are occupied. Again, a fairly low yield, but would anticipate a fairly significant yield long-term with those price points being at that anywhere from 180 to 250,000 range, which is extremely affordable and very marketable when you think about the number of people that are moving within the overall region. Those are good price points. And for young families, especially when you think about the interest rates and things that are out there right now, those are going to be really attractive price points for young families that are looking to find a place to move in this general region. And then kind of in Thornton Zone, we actually have the reserves at Friars Creek that has about 70 total future lots. This is at that Azalea Drive in Lowe's there at that corner right there. So again, could be somewhere between 30 to 45 students ultimately when that development is completed. And all of these do add up as time goes on. Also, you've got the Blackland Ranch addition, and you've got the Lofts at Blackland. So again, streets have gone in. You've also seen utilities, those type of things have been going in. Was platted back in 2023, and quite a bit of activity has already taken place and developments already taken place to start putting rooftops in that development. So again, you're seeing a fairly significant amount of activity taking place this current year, even with some of the challenges that we're seeing out there with the market being as challenging as it is related to the interest rates that are out there for new home buyers. The Lofts at Blackland has a small number again, 22 future lots that, but it was, the plat was approved this spring. but it was, the plat was approved this spring, this past spring. And then again, kind of around the Sampson Howard Elementary Zone, we have the Leon Reserve, again, 386 total future lots that are there, over about 95 acres in total. Again, anticipating when you start to add these in, again, with some type of a traditional yield, that could be 172 to 250 students ultimately in that area. And then just to the south, also a project currently right now that's being evaluated by the city. This is also the property where we have land for an element, for the district, for an elementary. So again, and around that general area, you can see that, you know, with that property, with that number of lots, it could be anywhere from about 157 to 227 students in total. It's not necessarily elementary students, but it is quite a few students when you start to add those two together. And then we do have, also in the Ray Allen Attendant Zone, we have this Triangle Track, small little development there that has five occupied homes currently right now, 14 that are under construction. And then we have remaining about 14 vacant developed lots that are there. So again, several of those homes have just closed just this spring. So again, pointing to activity that's just been happening this spring. And then out kind of in the south, southwestern section of the district, you've got the Beyond the Bend. This has about 208 total future lots. Break that up because there's a little bit of a split between our district and the adjacent district. But again, would anticipate with that general split, still anticipating 170 to 180 total students that could be coming out of that when that development takes place. Again, they went through and did a preliminary plat of that overall development back in June of 2023, so still in the planning phases, but no, that's continuing to move forward. And then we have Apartments, as I highlighted earlier, the Ariza Scott Boulevard Apartments, 260 total apartment units within that. There are 154 one bedrooms, 94 two bedrooms, and 12 three bedrooms. We used to not even reference the number of bedrooms, but we have found over time that we typically have more yield out of the apartments and multifamily units that have predominant two and three bedroom units. If you have a large number, but if they're primarily all single bedrooms, then you know that it's going to be a fairly low yield. So we always want to make sure the district's aware that that mix does matter whenever we're evaluating what kind of an impact it would have on the district. So looking forward, you know, we grew approximately about 200 students this year. Anticipate based off of the amount of housing activity that's taken place, just even in this past year into this next year. That number should stay fairly consistent at 196 students of growth anticipated for this next year. Again, we could see somewhere in that two and a half to 2.8% range of increases year over year for the next several years. With the numbers that we're looking at, depending on what happens with the interest rates, and of course, that does factor in because it factors into decision-making related to how many buyers are out there and how many homes the builders will build. But we could see that uptick up to, close to 3, 3.3 to 3 and a half when you get several more years out, again, in some anticipation of some interest rate drops over the next year and a half. And this really kind of shows you kind of what those changes do related to what that means for each one of those elementaries that we have within the district. Again, when you look at kind of Garcia, we think that that has some space related to its current capacity, but we will see some challenges at Kennedy Powell several years from now. Sampson Howard, even though it's a new school with all the developments that are there, we do anticipate that it will reach capacity and exceed capacity in the next four to five years. Also Thornton, Thornton is also a campus where we would still see some of that development down there. So those schools to the south, we do anticipate all the development that's taking place having an impact related to those campuses and that large development that we talked about potentially having an impact when you look at like the Kennedy Powell campus and some of the campuses that support that general area. And so, and the only other thing I would highlight is, you know, we do see long-term some challenges related to the middle school capacities. So you see that at Lamar and Travis. And then long-term, we could see as we get to that 2028 timeframe, as all that growth continues to move forward, some challenges at the high school level, seeing that potentially reach and exceed that, the high school capacity by the time we get to that 2028, 29 timeframe. So again, we continue to see growth in the overall district. We would anticipate significant enrollment as we move forward into next year, partly tied to the fact that we do have 17 active building subdivisions that have over 1,100 lots that are available to be built on currently right now. And we do know that based off of the numbers and developments that we've highlighted tonight, that there's about 7,600 total lots in future developments that are out there. So a lot of planning and growth still to come. And some of that groundwork is currently taking place, delivering additional lots into the district. And so really, when we look at the big picture, we could see a growth of about 1,100 students in the next five years and potentially could reach that 11,600 total by the time we get to 33, 34. So with all that, there will be some things that the district will want to start considering and evaluating related to what that growth will mean. And so you can see some of the considerations that the district will want to evaluate as we start moving forward, talking about the high school expansion, what that timeframe may look like. Also evaluating middle school related to the challenges that we talked about related to capacity at those existing middle schools. And again, at the elementary level, looking at expanding Kennedy Powell in future years to accommodate the development that's up there in that area. And then again, thinking about those, the needs that are going to be happening in those southern region of the district and what that looks like for the elementary school campuses in that area. So. That said, I think that's all I've got.
Members, any questions? I just want to note on here that, you know, the considerations, you know, it's most likely what we're need, but we're not clear where we're going to need it. So this is good information for us to study and figure out what our future needs are and when we do it and how we do it. Also too, we're going to do another study next year that will probably more clearly define what we'll do moving forward as far as a game plan. But I appreciate, this is helpful information. This is really good.
Very much.
All right. Thank you. Anything, anything else? Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you all so much.
Item B is future items discussion. Any items the board members wish to discuss at a future board meeting? I do want to mention that our listening circle for this Saturday with the TACMA group was canceled because of a couple important funerals coming up on Saturday. It looks like the following Thursday, the date, July 18th at 6:00 PM here, may work. We're still checking on that. So just those who were wanting to participate on Saturday, look at your calendars. We'll let you know. But it looks like that's a big possibility, we may do it a week from Thursday. All right. Item C is important dates, and Dr. Adams.
So we just have a couple. July is kind of a slower month as we gear up for the new school year. So we do have a board workshop, a listening circle with a chamber on July 15th, and that's at 3:00 on Monday. And then our principals and folks will start to come back next week. Do want to note, July 30th is the first day of our night academy, and that's with all of our first-year teachers, zero years. And that's a great chance for if you guys want to come by and say hello. I know they always appreciate seeing you guys. And that kicks off at 8:00 AM, I believe. Is that right? Mm-hmm, Donna. So Donna's team does a really great job with that, but they always love to see the board members. So that's all.
Thank you, Dr. Adams. Our next item is item seven, consent items. We have items A through H5. On item G, both myself and Mrs. Myers will abstain from it. So I think Mr. Gaines has a motion.
I make a motion to approve 7A through 7F and H1 through 5 altogether.
Motion made by Mr. Gaines, sir second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye. The like sign opposed, the ayes have it. And now we'll hear item G itself. Just again, myself and Mrs. Myers will abstain from that. Is there a motion on item G? Motion by Ms. Juarez.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And Mrs. Myers and myself abstain. The item passes. Thank you. Item eight, action items. A, human resources. One, teacher incentive allotment update. Dr. Ward.
Okay, thank you. I am just here to give you an update on our teacher incentive allotment that we have been implementing for the last three years, I believe. Okay, so as you remember, the teacher incentive allotment was part of House Bill III, and it was dedicated to recruiting, retaining, and supporting our highly effective teachers in our most neediest campuses or classrooms. And so, in thinking about where we're at and where we're going, we were initially part of Cohort C, but we decided to push that back to Cohort D because of the pandemic. And so we, our first application was Cohort D that we submitted in 2021. And that was our first group of, are you guys good? Do you know where we're at? Okay, that was our first cohort. And so that was reading and ELA and math teachers only that participated in that cohort. Then next year, we went through the application process again through Cohort E, and we added math and science. Also, we included resource teachers in that process as well and our co-teachers. TEA has decided that every five years, you have to reapply with your local designation system instead of just modifying every year. And so next school year, we will be starting that full application all over again and going through the big process that we went through when we went through Cohort D. And so I will be working very closely with committees and the DEIC to start that process again this coming school year. Okay, so there are three designations that a teacher can earn under the teacher incentive allotment. That's recognized exemplary and master. And with that designation comes a monetary amount. And so our teachers can earn anywhere between $3,000 and, it says $32,000, but really Temple I C teachers cannot earn $32,000 because we are not a rural district. And rural districts get extra steps in the pay scale because they're hard, it's hard to recruit teachers to work in rural districts because they pay less. So realistically, our teachers can earn between $3,000 and $23,000 in Temple I C. And those designations are good for five years. Teachers who earn a recognized designation one year can move up a designation the next year, and then that five years starts over. So I do believe this year, we have about eight teachers that moved up a designation. And so we're super excited and proud of them. And so they will now start their counter over and get five years with that new designation. Our eligible teaching assignments, as I stated earlier, our ELA are reading and language arts, pre-K through 12, mathematics, pre-K through 12, science, 5 through 12, social studies, 6 through 12, resource and co-teachers, pre-K through 12. And that does include our AP and IB classes as well. There are two, does anybody have any questions before I move on? Okay, so there are two components to our plan. That's the teacher performance and the student growth measures. Those are required by the Texas Education Agency, and they have to be a significant portion of your plan. In our original plan that we adopted with Cohort D, we had a third component, which was leadership capacity, but we are going to take that out. It is not a required component, and what we have found is it skews our data. And we want, we don't want anything to make our results invalid. And so we're just going to go with the two components that TEA requires of us. So teacher performance, we do use the T-Test rubric as part of our teacher performance assessment model. It's something we've been using for years, and we do not want to recreate the wheel. And our teachers are very familiar with it. So we look at, for the purposes of TIA, we look at Domains 2 and 3, which is instruction and learning environment. And so each of those dimensions under those domains are assigned a point value, and based on that point value determines whether or not a teacher qualifies for TIA under teacher performance. You have to meet both qualifications for teacher performance and for growth, student growth, and I'll show you that in a second, what that could look like. And so our teachers, in order to have, earn a designation, have to score at least a minimum of three point, an average of 3.75 in T-Test to qualify for a designation. Oh goodness, what happened? Did a hop, skip, and a jump across everything. Okay. Student growth, we have different assessments for different grade levels that we use. So pre-K, we use the circle assessment. Elementary, we use MAPS. And then at the secondary level, depending on what you teach, we use pre- and post-test. We use STAR or we use AP/IB exams. So just depending on what content you teach. So here's the criteria I was talking about in order to earn a designation. You have to have at least a 3.7 average on your T-Test performance rating, and you have to have at least a 55% student growth average in order to earn a designation. If you have, if you earn a 3.5 on your T-Test and a 55% on your growth measure, you do not qualify. Okay, so you have to meet both criteria. My TIA representative that I work with has this fancy Excel spreadsheet where you plug in their numbers and it kind of rolls everything through, and it tells you who earns a designation based on these numbering systems. So here's the fun part. We had 89 teachers that earned a designation for next school year, which is 24% of our teaching population. We are super excited about that. Last year, we paid out a quarter, a half a million dollars in TIA designation monies, and this year, we will pay out in August, 1.2 million dollars to our teachers who have worked really hard to earn that designation. So we're super excited to be able to do that in August. So I told Lisa, put on her run-in shoes this year, because it was a lot last year. So we're excited about that. And I think that's it. So what questions do you have for me?
First, I'd say that's impressive, the amount of teachers earning what we did in the past and what we're doing now, 1.2 million, wow.
1.2 million.
That's a lot of hard work to meet these measures.
Yes.
So that's great news.
Yeah, we're excited.
Members, do you have any questions for Dr. Ward? That's awesome. All righty. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Item B is academics. B1, the AI Three-Year Plan. Ashley Jones, welcome.
Hello. I'm so happy to be here, Mr. Posey and Dr. Adams. Thank you guys for allowing me to be here. What I'm going to be talking about is our three-year plan. And it'll start out very big, the pillars of our framework, and then dive in to more granular what each year of that plan looks like. So at any time, if you have questions, you can ask, or we can wait till the end. Okay. So again, we're going to go on to the purpose, what the digital learning team has. what the digital learning team has done this year to really prepare for how Temple ISD is going to integrate AI into our school system, and then understanding what artificial intelligence is and how that'll look for us. And then we'll go through the roadmap. So the purpose of our journey with looking at how to integrate AI really focuses on appropriate use in our school system. And that's supporting our parents, our staff, our students, and our teachers. So that's really baseline or purpose. My picture doesn't show up. But what we've done in the 23... There it goes. In the 23-24 school year, is we've really dove into what are the implications of artificial intelligence in a school system? We've done this kind of research through partnering with different entities, educational entities at the post-secondary level, also with different organizations such as ITSE. We were granted a scholarship to be a part of the ITSE General Motors Cohort where we got to work with other organizations, school districts from across the United States, as well as post-secondary organizations to really dive into what is artificial intelligence and learn about it. On the screen, you can see some of the partners that we had and that we worked with. So this is what... From that work, we have developed an understanding of AI for Temple ISD. And I'm really just going to quote what's in bold, but feel free to read the rest of the words. So artificial intelligence is technology that learns from data and adapts based off programming. That's really our understanding. And we know that there's different and various types of artificial intelligence. But our work and what this presentation is focused on is the use of generative AI in a school system. And so, when you think of what is generative AI, we really came up with a good description. And it's where AI or artificial intelligence that can create or generate images, text, or video based off of prompts. And so, that's really what our focus is. But we want to make sure with our focus that we address the benefits and the risks of artificial intelligence and as they apply to a school system. And so, you'll see on the screen some of the potential risks. And those are things that are risks with everything that we do. And one of them, plagiarism. Teacher and student accountability. Privacy and data privacy and the resources that we use. Overreliance on artificial intelligence is a risk that our plan addresses. And then also societal bias. Thinking about that definition that we shared, those are some of the big risks that artificial intelligence can bring as we integrate into a school system. But there are also benefits, and those benefits are on the screen. So content creation and differentiation for students is one that I think is really exciting. Assessment and timely feedback is something that's a benefit that we can bring into our school system that's exciting. Personalized learning assistance and personalized instruction. Creativity, collaboration, and skill building, which are all things that we build into our professional learning for teachers now, and we encourage for students. But AI can enhance that. That's how we're looking at it as a benefit. And then efficiency. Efficiency in our work and our feedback and what we produce and push out for our school system. So now, we're going to go back to those pillars that I was talking about and look at what is our framework, and then go into what that will look like, where we're grounding ourselves in and our guiding principles. And then you'll see a year-to-year kind of what we anticipate what we're going to do based off of that framework. Are we ready? So our framework focuses on three big pillars. One is guidance. And guidance is really focusing on appropriate use of AI, not to undermine teaching and learning here in Temple ISD. The next pillar is going to be professional learning, which that's the part that I like the most. That's what I do a lot of. And professional learning is just going to be exploring that appropriate use for teachers and really understanding and diving in, how do we use this? How can we be efficient? Where does it fit? And then innovation is going to be looking at how can we utilize this resource, this understanding that we have, to transform our instruction in a way that benefits our students? So that's big pillars. So now, we're going to go into what's grounding us, and that's our guiding principles. So we have six guiding principles that we landed on, and this really grounds our work. So at the forefront, student achievement. So how are we going to ensure we continue to support our students' educational goals? So that's our achieve. Knowledge, promoting AI literacy. And that's a big part of that professional learning. And we've done a lot of that from 2023 all the way till now. We're going to protect the integrity, the academic integrity of our students and our teachers. We're going to continuously evaluate the impact of artificial intelligence and the resources we use through usage and application. We're going to be transparent. Transparency is a big one because everything that we learn as we continue to work through our working understanding, we're going to share, not just with our internal stakeholders, but our external stakeholders as well. And then agency, we're going to make sure, and that's why it's on there, that human decision-making at the student and at the teacher level is at the forefront. So we're going to maintain that human agency throughout. Any thoughts or questions here? Okay. So now, we're diving in to the roadmap, and this is getting really granular. So we went big pillars. So these are guiding principles and what that looks like year-to-year. So 23-24, we really work to understand the implications of AI in our school system. Next year, this upcoming year, 24-25, we're going to define guidance and appropriate use for our district, what that looks like. Then we're going to expand opportunities in the following year for learning and innovation and encourage that. And then in 26-27, we're going to explore teacher and student agency utilizing AI with the guiding principles and that groundwork that we've built up. So understand, define, expand, and explore. So in the 23-24 school year, to recap, we focused really on knowledge and transparency and understanding the implications of AI. We started off our... We called it May Day PD because it was the end of last school year, and we had a May Professional Development for Teachers. And we hosted Podcast PD with authors from around the nation that shared their thoughts and their research on AI, and teachers got an opportunity to opt in on that. So that was exciting. We also hosted Turbo Tuesdays, which were quick, bite-sized PD sessions for teachers that had AI information, components, and applications. This school year, we investigated what AI looked like through research and partnerships. And then we piloted some AI writing resources in elementary and in secondary, which was exciting. In the 24-25 year, which we're coming up on, we're really going to define the guidance and provide learning opportunities for what appropriate use of AI looks like. And so, summer, we've had our Unraveling the Mystery of AI. We've hosted Turbo Tuesdays, and we're starting an AI Explorations Cohort. So that's going to be teachers that are interested, that want to learn more. It's come as they will. We're not requiring, but we have a lot of interest already. Then during the school year, we're going to make sure that we communicate with our stakeholders. So there's going to be parent communication on what we're doing with AI in our district. I do want to focus on that students. While we are trying to expose and inform teachers, students will not utilize AI and those resources this year. That's something that we're going to really focus on, promoting that AI literacy with our teachers first before we open it up to students. And then we're also forming an AI Steering Committee. This Steering Committee will be composed of district leaders, teachers, parents. That's going to help us define what that guidance is here in our district. And I think that's really exciting because we're bringing everybody into the conversation. And then in the summer, the cohort will go throughout the year learning, and they'll have a culminating activity. And then we're going to finalize guidance at the end of 2025. And then 25-26, we're going to start off the summer with a AI Summit that's going to include different school districts from the region to really share the learning, but also grow the capacity in the community as well. Then we're going to continue hosting Turbo Tuesdays, continue that learning for teachers, and start a new cohort. We are going... Really exciting in 25, in the fall of 25, is we're going to initialize the digital resources that have AI components and really hone in on that for staff development. And then for students, we're going to strengthen our tech apps and STEM courses because a lot of the components in artificial intelligence in the learning that we're doing, there are pieces in those classes already, and we're really going to focus on that. We're going to utilize AI components within digital tools with students. And so, that's going to be where we shift. From this year, where we're not using any AI components with students at all, we're going to shift and really focus within our digital resources the following year, utilizing those. And by then, our teachers are going to have the capacity of that AI literacy that we worked on for the last year. We're hoping in the spring to have a showcase of classroom innovations. And then in the summer, refine student usage and guidance because now we will have had a year of students utilizing the AI components within our digital resources so we can look back at what that looked like. Was there an impact? Was there a positive impact? Do we need to make a shift? And then evaluate tech apps and STEM courses to see where did it fit and really expand on that. Then in 26-27, we're going to explore and encourage innovation and then really focus in and evaluate the impact because it'll have been the third year now of us in our implementation plan. So we'll have a summer PD again, allowing teachers to dive in and learn. We will have during the school year, staff development. It will be embedded in our staff development now. It's not something new. It's something that we have in our resources. It's something that we can use. This is the impact. Here is how you can use it for teachers. And then students will be able to showcase how their use is in the classroom as well. And we'll continue to expand that agency for students. And then in the summer, the big thing is we'll try to have a stakeholder reflection to review what are next steps for implementation? What does this look like in our school system? So just a summary, an overview, an implementation overview, is that next year in the 24-25 school year, we're going to have a cohort of teachers that are going to dive in to some learning about artificial intelligence, generative AI in a school system, and the benefits and risks. And then we're going to, on the student end, we're going to limit student exposure and not have those resources accessible to students yet. That's a big focus for next year. And 25-26, we're going to continue with our cohort, but we're going to have teachers starting to explore more and expand more with AI. We're going to have limited exposure still with students, but we're again, initializing that digital use of the resources we currently have within our HQIM. And so, that'll be exciting for us to reflect back on. And then 26-27, we'll have now started our third cohort. Woo! And then we're going to expand teacher use and student use and really encourage innovation on both ends. And so, that's a big-picture overview kind of of that roadmap. And then here's a couple of next steps. We're going to finalize our Steering Committee representatives. And then we're going to identify teachers for our Cohort 1. And so, we're in that process right now, this summer, so we can kick off strong in August for this plan. Some big resources that helped us develop kind of what were the big pillars of our framework and what were ideal guiding principles for our school system came from these resources. So if you're interested in looking at those or need the links, I can always share those with you. Okay. That's the end of my presentation, but are there any questions?
Members, do you have any questions? I just want to say this is... Yourself and the district, this is a well-thought-out plan. AI is here. It's not going anywhere to make the best use of it. Also, where are the pitfalls? And how do we protect the students and protect the district too?
Yes.
So this is impressive that we are... I assume we're on the leading edge of our understanding and dealing with it... Not dealing, you know, the challenges of AI.
Yes. I just want to shout out my team. They have been at the forefront, really diving in to like, what will this look like for Temple ISD teachers? And so, this work, they're very passionate about. And so, thank you for saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much. Item C is Facilling Operations. One, Consideration for the Approval of the Sale of Real Property Listed as Lots 10 and 11, Block 11, and Lots 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, and 12. Block 12 of Crispview First Edition, locally known as TE Dixon Property at East Avenue J and South 30th Street, Temple, Texas. Dr. Adams?
So I'll be presenting this item for consideration. Mr. Boyd is ill tonight, so he was unable to be with us. So the bids were opened at 2:00 PM on July 2, 2024. The district only received one bid. The bid was for $82,000 and was submitted by Janelle Frazier with Central Texas 4C. And so, we feel like this is a really wonderful bid. Appreciate that we received one. And so, we'd recommend that the board approve the sale of the old TE Dixon property to Central Texas 4C at the cost of $82,000. I move to approve the sale.
Motion by Ms. Gallin?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Thank you. The motion passes. Item D is Finance. No issues, no agenda items? No?
No issues or agendas.
No issues or agenda items tonight, yes. That's a better way to put that. E, Student Services. We don't have any items. F is Board Committee Reports. One, Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes, June 27, 2024. The meeting was canceled. The next committee meeting is Thursday, July 25, 2024, 4:00 PM. Item 2 is the Policy Committee Meeting Minutes, June 26, 2024. Mrs. Cook?
The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Dr. Rogers presented potential changes to EIC Local that included class rank be calculated to the fourth decimal place. Valedictorian and salutatorian be in continuously enrollment in the district high school for the entire three semesters immediately preceding graduation, and that the valedictorian be considered the highest-ranking graduate for purposes of receiving the Honored Graduate Certificate from the state of Texas. The process and tabulations of the RFP for Armed Security for the 2024-2025 school year were presented. Recommendation was presented at tonight's meeting. Meeting was adjourned at 4:23 PM. The next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, July 24.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Item 3, Consideration for the Approval of EIC Local. Dr. Rogers?
Good evening again, Dr. Adams, Mr. Posey, and members of the board. As Ms. Cook just alluded to, I do have two proposals for you related to EIC Local policy. Recently, this past year, we had several ties when it came to class rank. And so, we had multiple students that were, for example, ranked at number 2. And while we certainly want to honor all of our students and their hard work academically, we also want to make sure that we have a specific student to recognize. we also want to make sure that we have a specific student to recognize at each rank position. So in looking at our neighboring and similar districts, we did find that GPA is calculated to the fourth decimal place in those districts, and TISD is currently calculating GPA to the third decimal place. And so I would like to say that we'll, we'd like to look at the numbers to see if this is an anomaly or if this is something that has a specific cause. But at this time, we are proposing to calculate GPA to the fourth decimal place for GPA. And then as well, upon reviewing EIC Local, we also recognize that the highest ranking graduate is currently tied to GPA in our policy. And so the student with the highest GPA is the highest ranking graduate. And the significance of this is that the state of Texas does award a scholarship for students who are identified as the highest ranking graduate. Again, we looked at similar districts and neighboring districts and found that in most districts, the highest ranking graduate is the valedictorian. For Temple ISD, our policy states that the valedictorian must have been enrolled in Temple High School since the beginning of their junior year. And so we are proposing that we have the same enrollment criteria for the highest ranking graduate. So again, two items for your consideration are, A, that the highest ranking graduate, B, the valedictorian, also that GPA is calculated to the fourth decimal place.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Any questions? It does require approval of the two policy items recommended by Dr. Rogers.
I move to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Davis.
I second their motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. It passes. And there be no further agenda items? We are adjourned. Thank everyone for attending tonight.